All right. We'll call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Capital Improvement Committee. And it is January 17th at 7:04 PM. And I believe. Who's missing? Melissa's here online. And Jen, yes, Jen is in the boardroom downstairs. But otherwise, I think everybody's here. All right, so the first item is present to speak. I don't know if anyone online or in the room is present to speak. Raise your little virtual hand if you are. No? Okay, then we can, we can move on. To approval of minutes. The minutes from last week I sent out. January 10th. And they should be. They're here in your. Pretty basic. But they'll be better going forward because Lisa is here to help us. But there was a pretty simple meeting last week, so.
I'll move to approve.
Do a second.
Second.
Any discussion about that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So project presentations by Department Conservation Commission. Bob Shavitt is here.
Bob Shavitt is here to present for the Conservation Commission. Our request this year is for $30,000. And we'd like to have that for the next five years. Questions that arise and why we need $30,000. We're looking for that money for the open space. Fund in town. I believe last year. For the first year, they said they reduced that to 25, but they approved the 30 for the last four years. And we'd like to have that 30,000 extended. Another year, so for the five years coming up. And. I guess I'd just like to explain what the open space fund is needed for. It's for a number of items. Land purchases, conservation easements, appraisals. Property appraisals, surveys, and legal fees. And basically, it boils down to that it's helpful to have adequate funds on hand. So we can move quickly when a piece of property comes, is, becomes available. Two years ago, 36 acre parcel came available, a budding of Fenton Ruby. And. We had no money to talk to the owner. The price started out at. It was sold for 125,000. We hadn't, we didn't have the money to act on that. So moving forward, we'd like to remedy that. I guess to bring you up to speed. At present, we're looking at the Pettix property. It's a seven acre parcel on the east side of Fenton Ruby. On Burma Road. The holdup right now is that. In order to get to the property, we could, would have to go up Burma Road from Fenton Ruby. Or we could hopefully access it on Burma Road or. Actually, it's, it's what the part of listed road that was. Connects to it was abandoned by Ashford. And. What the Conservation Commission is looking into now, can we get the landowner's property? To access the seven acre parcel on that abandoned road? Because once a road's abandoned, both of the butters automatically own half of the road. So it goes from town property to private property. And we need access in order to take down a small camp that's in disrepair, repair on the property. And our estimated cost on that will be somewhere between 30 and 40,000 dollars. And that includes probably taking down the camp that's there, filling in a well. And cutting some trees off of the dam that holds back a small pond. And I'm sure everybody's question will be, how much money is in the open space fund right now? Open space balance right now is approximately $95,000.
I don't have it memorized.
That sounds. That's what we had made about two months ago, Donna?
Yes, then that's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so that's the pitch for. The Conservation Commission. You know, I guess the next question may be, well, why are you looking to buy land? Well, in the last CI, in the last two CICs, in the last. Plan of Conservation and Development, the town had set a goal of setting aside approximately 20% of the land area in Willington as open space in perpetuity. And that's our goal, working towards that.
And we're only at like 8%, right?
Eight or, yeah, 7%, right?
Yeah.
That's what we'd like to have you consider. Those are the reasons why the money is necessary. I guess I could expound a little bit more on some of these. Insofar as appraisals. Even with the Pettix property that is in the process of. We have to have, when we buy a piece of property, we need two appraisals. And usually appraisal is around about $2,000 to $3,000 apiece. That's money that's needed upfront. Surveys. I'm sure everybody understands that surveys of property isn't inexpensive now. And the last time we dealt with the state with our last property purchase, we had to go back and. Put in some additional GPS. Markings on the property in order for them to release the money. To the town. We had gotten an $85,000 grant for that out of a cost of 125,000 for the property. So I think we did pretty well there. And the associated legal fees. That go along with that. There's also conservation easement. Sometimes conservation easements come. Within a large piece of property, but not always. Question comes up an awful lot of, why doesn't town want to own property? Well, the answer is. The town would probably rather not own the property. And one way to get around that, in order to have someone private own the property and maintain it, is through a conservation easement. The. In order to have that land set aside in perpetuity in its natural state, or at least in an agricultural use, logging and such, no gravel or anything. Or if somebody's farming it, is to buy the development rights. And that's set according, it varies from time to time. But that's what keeps the property from being developed, that's what keeps it in its natural state. So. That's kind of a shallow rundown of why the money is necessary for the items that I highlighted. So I guess I'd ask if there's any other questions. Yes, Steve?
What role does state funding fall into helping acquire open space and cover some of your costs?
Well, it, it does. I mean. The last property we bought on Mason Road. We closed. Two years ago. The property, the cost of the property was 125,000 dollars. But then you had to throw in the cost of two appraisals. You had to throw in the cost of the survey. And you had to throw in the cost of the legal fees. And at the end of it. When the state wanted more GPS. Locations cited on the property, that I believe cost an additional. Almost $4,000. So the grant that we got was for $85,000. That was to offset the cost of the property. But our standing. Costs. The appraisals, the survey, the legal fees. That was still on the town. Which came out of our, out of the town's open space line. So when you look back. Over the. 20 some years that I've been involved with Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission has brought in over $300,000. In state grants to offset costs.
Is that funding still available to you if you have a property, say you're trying to buy this coming year?
To be real honest, do you, through the hoops. That the state. Has gotten to and. How. The administration of that process worked last time for a seven acre parcel, we're not interested. There's just too much time. I mean. Two of the members of Conservation Commission. Put together just shy of a hundred page document in order to fulfill what the state wanted. And that took those two people. Four or five months to complete. So after that last experience, unless. You know, for a 30 or 40,000 dollar parcel of property. It really doesn't. Justify the 60. Most everybody, the state is saying 50% back. We were very, very fortunate because that's in the Fenton, near the Fenton River, in that watershed where Yukon and Willimantic, so they gave us a bonus on that. And it also is, it sits over an aquifer in that area. So we got more points that way. But the time, energy, and effort that would go into, to. That process for this. The, the two people that did the. Preparation for that, the grant paperwork, aren't interested in doing that again for this parcel. It's just, it's, the value isn't there. Time, effort.
Does the time and effort, I, I'd assume for a larger piece, it would make sense for that time and effort. So at about 38 acres or more, would it be worth it?
Yes.
And, and this is such a small parcel, it's not going to make it.
Well, one of the things that we dealt with on Marsh Road, that last parcel. I mean, it's just down from where you are.
Yeah, I know where.
And it was the last parcel, it's almost like putting a thousand piece puzzle together.
It was the last piece.
Where is that last piece? And if it's not in the box, it's pretty upsetting. And. They were, we got first refusal for 125,000 dollars. For 125,000 dollars, they could have built either three or four houses on Marsh Road. So that was the key to the effort that we had put in on Marsh Road already. So in that sense, it was more than worth it. And one of the other large parcel. By Marsh Road, at the time when that was purchased. The price on that 120 some acres was. 700 and some thousand dollars. So, I mean, we're not, you know, we're, time and return was certainly worth it. When we're looking at that last little piece, that was worth our time also to prevent. Three or four houses there being built on a road that. Should be nominated for a scenic roadway. So. You know, that's, that's my presentation of, you know, why we're not interested in doing it for this small parcel.
Interesting.
Sure.
Just so I can clear this up, the 30 to 40,000 is only for the parcel. And then you would have legal fees, surveys, and. Appraisals on top of that, right?
We already had the appraisals done.
Okay.
So. First of all. We had to understand what the property was worth. I mean, that, that's first and foremost. It's no different than somebody that lives in a. Very small house and they want a million dollars for the house. Well. Let's get an appraisal so we can start the conversation.
Okay. So those are done?
Those are done.
Survey hasn't been done? You don't know exactly where the borders of property are?
We do know where the, the borders are.
Okay.
That's, that's been done fairly recently. Usually you do a survey to clear up any legal title things.
So you said presently 8% of the property or the land in Willington is open space. How many acres is that, do you know?
At the top of my head, I don't. Fenton Ruby Park is. Just shy of 300, 280 something. On Marsh Road, I believe, the largest parcel is. That's about. Maybe two. 50, 225. And then there's miscellaneous parcels that are given as open space in the course of development over the years.
Right, so the goal is to have 20% of the land is open space. Now, surrounding towns, what's their goal typically?
I really don't know. I can tell you one thing is that Tolland, in order to slow development down, has bonded $7 million to purchase open spaces.
Well, Tolland's got a lot more money than Willington has, though.
Well, they have a lot more overhead costs as well. And the reason they. Bonded that much money, and I believe three bonding sessions. Was that so many houses were being built that their schools weren't adequate four or five years after they were built. So in order to slow that, they decided to start buying properties. And, you know, again. A lot of people that are, that have large parcels of land. They're attached to the land. And they'll sell it at a reduced price. And what you find when you go out looking and talking to people about their land. Every family's needs are different. That will fluctuate the cost that land costs.
Well, is the Conservation Commission at all looking into that old wagon shed property called? Something hyphen something?
Oh, Kettle Rock?
Kettle Rock. Thank you. It wasn't a hyphen, it was a rock.
Yeah.
Is, is that come up on your radar at all? And what, how, how the Conservation Commission could utilize the town's leverage over that property or?
Well, I think, and again.
And, and I know that would cost money, that's why I'm asking the question.
Well, that, I guess that's up to the town, you know? I mean, it's basically.
I just find that with open spaces, if, if you guys advocate for it, it's more likely to happen.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we. I guess everybody has a wish list. And, I mean, we'd always like to. It, the, the best open space that you can acquire is open space that's next to.
Open space.
More other open space.
Right.
For wildlife. We, an awful lot of townspeople, if you talk to most people that use Fenton Ruby, and the parking lot's pretty full down there all the time. And if you look at the register, the people go hiking, it fills up pretty fast. You have to keep, you know, putting new. Blank pages down there. It's there for the recreation. But it's also. A natural resource for the critters that are out and around. And a lot of them are out at night that we don't ever see. So that's, that part's important there. You know, it's. Right now, the Pettix property, if we're looking at that, again, it's really isolated. It's that little chunk right above. The east edge of the park.
Once again, it's one of those keystone pieces, isn't it? Because it's two sides of the triangle or border of the park.
Right, right. So.
And the other thing that's important about that property is the dam, which, which wasn't maintained at one point. And I remember it collapsed and flooded down the road, which.
It's why the road's not accessible now?
Well, what, what, what happened there was, that's. The water bars that were on our abandoned section of Burma Road. The water started falling straight down the road instead of flowing off. That's, that's what washed the road off that one time.
Yeah.
It wasn't the dam.
It wasn't the dam.
It wasn't the dam. Water overflowed that dam, but water also overflowed the dam that's been maintained on the property that, that comes out onto Burma Road. You drive up and there's private gateway there.
Yeah.
But most of that water came down Burma Road because the water bars hadn't been maintained for years.
Right. So it, so it would be good if the town had that so that they, they could maintain it easily, easily.
Well, that and it would be advantageous for. If we ever decided to walk the top of the hill up there.
Yeah.
You know, for forest regeneration. That would be interesting also. One of the other properties that we've kind of gotten interested in. Is a parcel on Jared Sparks Road. Which used to be the Sparks Farm. Jared's parents owned that farm.
Where is it?
Right across the street from Crooks.
Oh, yeah.
They had the nursery.
Yep.
And it runs up to Mark and Japita, Mark and Japita's house on the top of the hill overlooking Bluebird Farm. Oh. So. And the town owns 19 acres adjacent to the old Sparks Farm. So that's something that. It's on our watch list, one, one, one. One item at a time, please.
Yes. So, being the history guy you are, does that farm have historic value at all? Or has it been so. Changed over the years, it's probably lost some of that? Or would they have to excavate or the archaeologists go in or?
You can, you can go down. Walk down the, the old road. They call it a bridle path in the day. And walk up to the house where it was. You'll walk up and. Stand on the large rock that was there, that would have been the stone, the front step. And you can walk on the step that little Jared Sparks and almost brothers or sisters walked on. The well is off to the side. It's a half cellar. And there's a small back part that just had a quick stone foundation. The barn would be right next to the road as you walk up to the house. And I believe his uncle had a house across the street. So with the. 250th anniversary of the United States of America coming up.
And the 300th anniversary of the town of Willington coming up.
Right. And. Since there is only two plaster professionally done busts of Jared Sparks known. One is at Harvard in their dining hall. The other is in the vault that the Historical Society owns. It was given to the town by its half-brother, well, not given, on loan. Which could be called for at any time. It was given, they wanted to give it to the town of Willington in 1889. But they didn't because Willington didn't have a library. What they did do is they did the closest thing that they could. They gave it, they loaned it to the Stafford Library because they had a library. And there it was until the library there said, I think it's about time that you take that bust. So we do have the bust. And we also have several of his globes and moons that he used for astrological movements. So as we come up in seven years, the 250th anniversary, we're hoping to have. A display that highlights Jared Sparks and his. Role in the new country of America. He's the first historian of the United States.
Can I jump in briefly with, I'm hoping you can help orient me. Just give me a sense or ground me with a sense of scale and scope. As to how far we've gotten and how effective, you know, requests of the next five years for a 30,000 a year actually is comparatively. Or PSCDs up in. What, I should know this, 2027? Right, it's less than 17, 18, something like that?
It's even sooner because it was probably 2016, maybe?
Yeah, so. So I think, you know, you're, this was a concerted effort to kind of build back that open space fund as a part of that ten year. Planet Conservator. planet conservation and development. We're fairly far into it now. Um, now this, we have about twelve percent of total land area protected, um, instead of the eight. So I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, how much, how much progress has we made over the seven years, knowing that we've been investing in it over the next, over the last, over many years, we've been trying to increase the open space fund and then knowing that we're still, say, eight percent shy, how far does a hundred and fifty thousand over the next five years go, setting meeting the goal that's, that's outlined?
What the money in the open space does by having it there, it allows us to take the first steps when a property, when, when we understand that either we're approached or we approach somebody, it allows us to move and have surveys done or have, um, evaluations of the property done without having to come and say, you know, go through the process. Board of Finance, oh, well, we haven't got any, you know, this is planning ahead. So the seed money for the first initial steps of acquiring a property can be taken without the burden on Conservation Commission coming before the Board of Finance and saying, well, this is what we need and, well, how much does it cost? And then, you know, this is where Donna comes in, when she has to crunch the numbers. Well, we can't give a solid number. You know, we have to call and find out, you know, we have to call two organizations, find out how much an appraisal costs from two different, well, get four or five different, uh, people to give us an appraisal. Get the two and meanwhile, the clock's running.
So are we, so are we saying that the, like, large property purchases aren't really coming out of this open space?
No, this, no, no, that's, 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 this, this, you're, you're, you're not gonna buy, uh, eight percent of the town for thirty thousand dollars a year.
I know, I know, I know that.
But it, it, it's the money that gets you to figure out what you can buy of it.
So we've been reliably spending, you know, we're anticipating about thirty thousand, well, a little less than that because you're stockpile.
Well, it, what the.
Sorry, poor trust.
Well, what, what the position had been of C I P over the years, find a piece of property. When you do, we'll find the money for you to move forward. Okay, the, when we use that scenario, it takes us about two and a half years to finally close on a piece of property. And there's, some people aren't willing to wait two and a half years for the bureaucracy to check off one box at a time. And sometimes even come to meetings once in a while. You wish you could check off more than one box off at a time.
And I, and it's more than just the bureaucracy, it's the uncertainty. Because how, how, how can you approach someone and it, when you don't actually have money put aside for it?
I appreciate the forethought there on that.
Yeah, yes.
Uh, there used to be a lot of discussion on whether thirty thousand dollars is way too much and start over from zero every year. I remember those days.
There were a lot of years where it was zero.
Yep.
And then.
But I believe you were able to buy at least something with the approach of going to town meeting.
Yes.
If something came up and finding the funds from somewhere other than the open space fund, is that correct?
No, that's, we were putting away a lot of money for that at one point. Uh, and then, so it was set aside. We were doing the same thing as we, like, we were doing for, uh, the, uh, assessors. Cause we knew the assessment was coming up every seven years or.
Maybe I'm dating myself, but the word here is that you were right. You did not set aside money.
We didn't set aside money.
Specifically in the conservation.
Right.
However, I believe.
We set aside money for open space someplace else.
No, it was in the general reserve actually.
General, yeah.
And when property did come up, they were able to.
Yes.
Approach that and get the money from general reserve, even though it wasn't held in the conservation.
Yeah.
But the townspeople had said, yes, let's spend it from.
And they still would, we still have to go to town meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
To appropriate from that fund. It's just, they can go now to the buyers and say, we have money in our account. Versus, we're gonna have to go to all these meetings and convince all these people to let us use this money that hasn't actually been earmarked for this. It's, it's.
Which you would still have to do anyways in the end. That if you did get through the appraisal.
Right, right, but there, there's two, there's two, two groups of people you have to sell. The first is the, the people you're trying to buy them, buy the property from. That it's worth their time and effort to do the dance with you. Then you have to set, sell the townspeople on it. But those are two different audiences and, um.
Very much so. I, I'm agreeing with you a hundred percent. That's what that led to.
Yeah. So, I mean, it alleviates the, the, it, it helps with the first part of it.
And that first step helps in going to the second.
Yeah.
Which is.
I think it's, it's really important to be able to quote unquote, break the ice of, when you're talking to a landowner, so that you can, okay, well, first of all, when they're, they're talking a price and you're talking a price, well, how do you, how do you get to the middle of that? And it's nice to be able to have the money and have that appraisal done. And if the boundaries aren't such, that comes up in the appraisal. So that lets the landowner know that, oh, this isn't just as you think it is. There may be other issues here that need to be addressed. And by having money in the open space fund, it allows us to do that. So we don't have to go knocking on the doors. Donna doesn't own, Donna just has to go to the open space line and say, well, yes, this is how much money we have and yes, you can spend it. And we don't have to rob Peter or Paul to help with this effort. I mean, that's, that's what we're looking for, you know, and as it was mentioned, there were an awful lot of years that we came knocking and we got nothing.
Yes.
It's, it just makes it a lot easier all around. And in, in the big scheme of things, if we want to try to save twenty percent plus or minus of Willington in perpetuity, what's thirty thousand dollars every year looking forward that the next, the inhabitants of Willington for the next two hundred years are going to be able to enjoy.
Who decided and when was it decided to put aside twenty percent? I've only been on this committee a year.
Uh, probably twenty years ago.
Okay.
When we, when we, I, when I first, while I was in town for a while and it was whole plan of conservation and development was developed through a number of co, not town meetings, meetings of various groups of citizens throughout the community deciding a punch list of what was important for them as residents of Willington. And, I mean, you can go back and read the, the first one that I was involved in. And it sort, it evolved into the second one. With the second one, uh, you know, you, you, you get smarter as time goes on, so you kind of tweak things. And I think the Conservation Commission has gotten a little bit more savvy about what makes things work easier, not just for us, but for landowners and how we can approach landowners. Uh, and you have to understand that plan of conservation and development is two things. In Willington, you don't have a plan of development. All you have is a double plan, conservation and development. When you look at that plan, you have to understand the Willington Conservation Commission developed the, the first half of that plan, the conservation plan. We had our fingers in a few processes in the development of Willington. But, and in essence, the Conservation Commission is only a commission, it's an advisory group. If any of the other boards in town have questions about certain things that deal with the environment, they come to the Conservation Commission as a, a reference.
I was just curious because I personally like the idea of twenty percent. I grew up in a town that was very much like Willington, about five, six thousand people, just over the border, three miles into Rhode Island. Um, I liked the rural nature and then we moved back to Connecticut five years ago and I drove to the, I can't, I can't recognize it because of all the development they did. There's just house after house after house. And I would hate to see that happen to Willington because I moved here because it was kind of town wanted to be. So, I mean, I personally like the idea. I was just curious as to how long people have been talking about it.
And, and actually, I'm glad you mentioned the P O C D because this is, you're the very first presenter of our process this year, but it is one of our questions on the app, the application that people fill out is, is, is this in compliance with the Plan of Conservation and Development? Because, um, it's, it is, we don't have a strategic plan, but in the absence of one, it is what we have to guide us in, as terms of what is important to the townspeople, in terms of what we see the future of the town being. So it, it's pretty much the most important document in my mind, but, um, and it's, everybody should read it. Cause it has a lot about every single thing you could think of in the town. Okay, where is it? I'll go read it. It's on the website somewhere. Um, I haven't looked at it anywhere.
And there is a map that there is on that with the Plan of Conservation and Development, all the, uh, town open space, there's a map that shows all the town open space.
Yep.
There might be one in the basement, downstairs to on the wall. I mean, I can't remember what.
Not sure if that.
But that's one of the fifteen maps that's hanging down.
Of the eight percent you mentioned, is that all land, including any state land or private trusts or anything like that?
State land. Not state land.
Are there any, is there any land held by private trusts like Joshua's Trust or something like that? Would that be counted in the preserved land?
Well, the number you had was twelve and I think what it is, is we have eight and then the other four is, uh,
State.
State land and private land where they've sold the development rights and the other basket of land.
There's, I think, two Joshua's trusts. One parcel is down on Jared Sparks. Just off the Jared, what, what's Jared Sparks? Goes up onto Common Road a little bit. Uh, and then the other one is over on, um.
Blair Road was one of the old farm there.
Uh, yeah.
That one, yeah.
And, well, that, those are what Joshua's has. Um, and the open space that we have, we do, uh, take a peek at it every once in a while. Make sure the gutters aren't, uh, encroaching. So, there's a little bit of responsibility involved there, too.
The, uh, Yukon Forest, I believe, is part of that too, but there's some question as to whether they, they put non-development into perpetuity because I, they were thinking about building a building there a couple of years ago and I, I don't know what happened to that.
I wouldn't guarantee Yukon would put anything aside in perpetuity, which I could see in the current budget.
The last time they had to go around and believe, well, I believe that Yukon said that they would, they either stated they'd give a, give another fifty or seventy years on that parcel.
Okay.
That's the moss tract.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. So.
Any more questions for Bob?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Oh, thank you for the time.
Take you to the Conservation Commission for all you guys do.
Well, thanks.
That's a lot.
We enjoy it.
Yeah. Um, all right, moving on. The next, uh, group on our agenda is the library.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, I know Stuart was on the committee last year and Christina was. I don't feel like any of the rest of you were, or if you don't remember, if you were. Um, basically, it's not that different from last year's request. Um, the first thing we had requested last year was, um, working on the envelope of the outside of the building. It needs some caulking. It needs, um, mortar replaced in a couple of places. The stucco is, is peeling. But after the walkthrough, there are no gutters on the back of the building. I know there's been a huge discussion about the, the gutters on the front of the building. People have been out, they checked them. There's nothing wrong with the gutters except that they overflow on a regular basis. Um, but the comment was made that if we put gutters on the back of the building, it might prevent some of the damage there is to the exterior in the back of the building. So for the first year, we don't have a quote on it yet because this was just something that came through with, um.
Oh, am I doing something?
No, it was me.
Okay.
With the walkthrough is, um, gutter requests. So all we have is the, the cost for the gutters, to replace the gutters on the front. We do not have a quote on the back because as I said, it just came up at the walkthrough. Um, I don't know if gutters would help, but it was what was suggested at the walkthrough. Um, and it was suggested that we do that first and push fixing the exterior of the building, the envelope of the building till after gutters were installed, particularly in the back. So water running down was not going to create the same problems that we had. If we fix the stucco, is it just gonna start cracking again because water is running down the back of the building? Um, so that was what we were looking at for year one. And then year two, um, working on the exterior of the building. It means caulking, mortaring, um, patching stucco, patching and painting wood trim around the windows. And just trying to keep it up. I know I said the same thing last year. I say the same thing at every meeting I go to. Yeah, there are buildings in town that are in more need than the library. But if we keep up with the library, then maybe we won't end up like some of the other buildings. Um, and that is actually a fairly high cost. Um, and a lot of that cost is actually how they can do it. Because with the library on the hill, our top floor is ground level in the front and three stories up in the back, which means scaffolding and all sorts of weird stuff. So labor is actually considered to be fairly high on that. Um, so I'm trying to find where the actual numbers for each one are. Um, so I said, the first year, we have front gutters at, um, twenty thousand and then whatever it is for the, the back gutters. Um, the, these are still quotes from last year. And so the, um, exterior work, they have a quote of, um, not that much actually for doing the mortar, the caulking, et cetera. Um, that is listed at, um, like I said, thirty-eight hundred for materials, but another fifty-two hundred for labor because of the work that we do in the back. And then, um, the painting, the dealing with the trim and everything is another fifty thousand. So that comes to a little over fifty-five thousand. That would be year two. Um, year three, um, is the same as year three was last year. Oh, actually, I guess I should say it has been requested, but we don't, again, don't have a quote on it by the people in the library, by the staff in the library. If they are going to try and repair and patch the wood on the windows, that it also, they wash the windows before they do that, but also we get them to put a UV coating. Because on the south side of the building, you've got huge windows and they go directly into the stacks and a reading area. So things are getting sun damaged. So it was requested that possible by the directors of. So, it was requested that possibly by the directors, that possibly we could add that at the same time. That would add another, we believe, $6,000. I don't have the exact quote in front of me. And they quoted 5,000 to wash the windows. So, I guess it actually comes to more like 65,000 to 70,000 in year two. Year three is the same as it was last year, and that is replacing the carpet in the community room and the conference room downstairs with vinyl flooring. It's 17-year-old carpet and it looks like 17-year-old carpet. We have had it cleaned, it does look better than it did, but it's still wear and tear on 17-year-old carpet. Year four is just, again, paint on the walls is 17 years old, it is not washable paint. So, you know, little kids' fingers and people walking by, it's dingy and dirty and there really isn't much that we can do. And again, that's a very high cost, high ceilings in the the library, they're talking about, you know, again, having scaffolding to get up to some of the higher ceilings. So, again, they've got a price for that that's, again, very high. They've got 65,000 for the interior and only 50,000 for the exterior because there's more space. And we have nothing for year five, except that it has been recommended at a couple of the walkthroughs that we consider getting a quote on when it might be to replace the roof. Because in five years, the library will be 22 years old instead of 17, and we need to figure out the lifespan of the roof and whether or not that might need to be done. So, pretty much everything except possibly putting new gutters on the back is simply fixing problems that they are and making the library a little bit cleaner and nicer than it currently is.
So Karen, I was trying to take the submission and put in the amounts in each of the years. Is it, is this right? So, year one is 62,000?
No, because that would have been year one last year. Year one this year will just be gutters and we're thinking, since we don't have quotes for the back, we're thinking 30,000 to 40,000. And then 62 would be the main part of year two, but then you would have to add the cost for the washing of the windows and the UV protection if we get it.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm struggling trying to relate these. I mean, I had a packet that I can relate to myself, but.
Well, I'll be perfectly honest with you, this is the first time I've seen the pack. I, I worked on it, but I have not, had not seen the final packet.
Yeah, I, I did this a couple of days ago where I downloaded the, all of the projects. And I was trying to, because the great part of everybody submitting their things the way that they have is it goes into a system that you can just download into a spreadsheet, but the numbers aren't totally matching up with what I have in here. So, should I check with, with Deb tomorrow or?
Yeah, she's.
I just want to make sure when we put it in the spreadsheet that we have the right numbers.
Yeah, it does say 62,000 for construction the first year. And then another 60,000 for construction the second year. I'm not sure where that 62,000 comes from the first year.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, because all we had was, as I said, gutters on the first year. We didn't anticipate it being that much, but the second year will probably be at least 60, if not a little bit more if we add the protection. Okay, year three looks fine. It's basically, I don't know what's under equipment purchases, but it's basically the vinyl flooring for downstairs.
I had 21,868 for year three.
Yes, that is correct.
And then year four, 71,225.
That is simply redoing the interior.
Yeah, the paint.
The painting and patching.
And then 10,000 in year five.
Which is just a number we put in.
Yeah.
It's to have the roof evaluated and see what we need. We really have no idea, but we just put that in because at that point, we like maybe would like to see if somebody would come out and take a look at the roof.
Yep. Does anybody have any questions?
Given that some of these quotes are almost two years old, are you going to have them, at least year one, be updated before we vote on this?
When are you voting? I don't know, a month, yeah.
Obviously, years two through five.
Right.
The guess is the guess, but if it's coming down to actual spending, one, we want to make sure if we do approve something that you have enough money for, it don't have to come back. And also that we have an idea what the real cost is.
Right, and I understand that, and we did not do that, but this Mountford company is the company that built the library and they are more than willing to do quotes for us, and if we need more than one quote, we do have other sources that we can get quotes from.
Yeah, I think at this stage, at least one good quote is at least
Yeah, I can get you.
Somewhere to start with, but knowing what inflation has been and where it is.
Oh, no kidding.
It's not going to 3% anymore. And, you know, we've seen stuff that's, you know, 10, 20% a year and we need it almost two years old and we're
Right, and.
There's not enough money listed, especially for year one.
Building costs are, just the materials have gone so sky high. The front gutters, we'd have to get a new quote on it, we'd have to have some big amount and look at the feasibility of putting gutters on the back.
Based on my couple of walk-throughs, I certainly support that, where gutter things, the damage that for your door and the water entering under the door, this all amounts of water pouring off, we were just above it.
And I believe the replacing that door is in route on year two, but the cost for that was listed as only $1,000 because Mountford was folding it into all the other things in their quote.
You just think to spend that money to fix the door and end up with the same problem going back.
Right, and the cracking of the stucco and the foundation on the back, which is probably from water running down because there are no gutters. That's why we moved gutters up to year one. But I can certainly call Leo or have Deb or Hope call Leo and see if he can come out and give us another quote, and I can get that, everybody will get it. I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. I could have done this if it wasn't for the fact that I only found out last Wednesday at the library board meeting that nothing had been done. Yeah. I'm not going to name names, I'm not going to blame anybody, but like I said, it was just at the last week's Wednesday's library board meeting that I discovered nothing had been submitted. So, that's why we have no new quotes.
Well, thank you for that.
Can I also get a sense or gauge your sense of confidence, and these are all a single contractor, you get a single quote for all of these items, it's like a single point of reference?
It was a point of reference from the guy who built it. We do have other quotes for some of these things from other sources. I don't know if anybody has any suggestions because we have found consistently that we will call somebody and I'll say, great, and they'll come out and then we never hear from them again. Yeah, exactly. But like I said, Mountford has a I don't know what the one that was.
Track record.
No, it's not, it's not the track record, it's they have an investment in the building because they were the contractors. And so, they would like to see some of these things done.
It's going to be a consistent trend, but part of the appeal for contractors is having enough having a project that you can kind of, I think, you need to, and also, you know, generally can be economical for the town to bundle projects
Yeah.
together into something more significant. I know there's, there's constantly a struggle to get, as I said, school comes across, having difficulty getting people to provide quotes. The stucco work, I guess, the year involves year two and our spreadsheet here, but all of the caulking, there's a little bit more detail here than some of the other single lines, just a lot item.
Yeah, it's just materials.
Yeah.
And I would hazard a guess that that quote is very low right now.
So, you know, I just have to say, I'm a cleaning contractor and one of the things we do is windows. I mean, I couldn't put an offer in on this because of my position. But, you know, in this day and age, I don't know why they would have to use scaffolding to do the outside to the windows. I mean, the whole thing can be done with extension poles on the outside and deionizing the windows to get everything off.
It's not necessarily washing the windows that requires that. It's getting up and scraping and, and patching and painting the window trim.
So, you'd have scaffolding up there to start with.
Right, so that, that is more where they need the scaffolding up.
And on the south side, you'd probably do a man lift, kind of empty the parking lot to work out of. It's more to the three-story side of things that you probably can't get a machine down there to.
Yeah, yeah. If any of you have ever seen the back of the library.
I went there and did a quote, like maybe 10 years ago.
Yeah. We put in a request a couple of years ago for a second exit for the offices in the back, because right now the only way they have to get out is past the front desk and out the front door. And, you know, school shootings.
Big drop off there.
Well, that's the thing, somebody said, well, why don't you just jump out the window? And it's like, because it's three stories high.
Three tall stories.
Three tall stories. It's why we're not asking the directors to jump out the window. That, and, and it's not just where the building ends, it just keeps going down and down and down and down. So, yeah, it's, it's very tall.
Tuck and roll at the bottom, I guess.
And then somebody said, why don't you just get one of those ladders that you hang on the windowsill and it's like, because they don't go down that far either. Guess you could climb down and jump from the bottom. But, yeah, that backyard is tough.
I've had some of your staff and they don't want to jump out of it.
No, they don't.
Even on the first floor, they don't.
What's your few projects you have going on right now that you have money for?
We, we had put in a request for HVAC stuff that we had the money for, we've done that. That was part of a request we had last year. We had requested some work in the mechanical room, that's already been done. Right now, there's no current ongoing projects because we've done a number of them. Right now, the biggest thing that we would like to see is the back door, but again, if there's no gutters in the back and it's not going to fix it, there's no point in spending the money to have the back door done.
What about the ARPA money, the retaining wall?
We are still waiting to hear back. Apparently, Hope and Deb did not realize that they were supposed to put in an RFP through the town. And so, that only got done a few months ago. But, again, that, that is basically the same sort of thing that we want on the exterior of the building. It is a, at least two-story, if not three-story retaining wall, and at the top is the patio to the children's library. And it needs to be re-caulked. The railing around, whether cemented or caulked, whatever it is, all that stuff peeled out so water's draining down there and out the blocks. You can see that, I think you've seen.
I'm just curious, money-wise, did you get any money this fiscal year that either you spent or haven't spent yet?
We, we got building stuff and we have spent a number of it, but we still have a little bit left because there's still a few more months in the fiscal year. And we had to spend it on things we wanted to do just in case something came up in an emergency.
That's out of your regular budget?
Yes, we have a building, we have a building repairs and a building maintenance both.
So, you didn't get any ARPA money or CIP money this current fiscal year?
They did. That, that was for the retaining wall.
The retaining wall.
So, you have the money to do the retaining wall?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, ARPA approved that, just hasn't come in yet because the RFP didn't fill in when it was supposed to go in.
Uses as another shame, uses as an opportunity for a shameless plug by the facilities or operations manager for the town.
Which is what we talked about last year with the library, could we get somebody to come out and look at everything and give us an idea? Because, yeah, I'm a chemist, I'm not an engineer. Hope has a degree in library science. Deb is just Deb, none of us are, are engineers. So, yeah, it was something we talked about last year, was getting a facilities manager out to take a look.
That's actually why we put the $50,000 in the facility study, that was because with the idea that the library would get done, this building would get done, all, all the buildings would get done. That's what that's for.
I'll work with you on that.
Okay, great.
Right at the moment, I'll be perfectly honest, a lot of this is relied on Ralph Tollis. And Ben, he's online right now. Oh, hi, Ralph. He's been very nice, he came out and did a couple of drill holes in the foundation to make sure we don't have crumbling foundation, and we don't. And a few other things, because like I said, I don't know anything about construction. I mean, I can paint a wall, but that's about it. So, yes, if, if there was a facilities manager, he would come up and take a look. But, yeah, out of our current fiscal budget, we have done HVAC work, we have done elevator work. We've done another, a few other small things, and we do have the ARPA coming in for the retaining wall. And I'm not sure exactly what's left in our line items of building repair and building maintenance for the rest of the year, but like I said, we didn't want to spend it all at the start just in case something came up. And if no emergency comes up in the next couple of months, we have a few things that we could possibly do.
Can we ask Ralph, since he's on the call, if he's willing to talk, if he could fill us in a little bit on the foundation? On your foundation investigation, if you're willing, Ralph? Because I'd like to have a sense of.
Well, I can talk. Does, does anybody want to listen to me?
Yeah, sure, if you, if you have something.
What would you like to know, since I'm here?
What connections at the library is it, or isn't it, and how'd you find out?
Okay, what'd I do? I took four core samples out of the foundation for the library. They were examined by a lab in Canada that's very familiar with this issue. It's not 100% pyrotite-free. The conclusion that we've come to is that it's not enough to warrant doing anything other than waiting, and we've got what? How many years on that building now?
17.
Yeah, it's, judging from what I saw, it's unlikely that that, that mineral is ever going to affect that foundation. I can't guarantee it, but I suspect it's not likely. Judging from everything else that I've looked at.
That's good news.
That was the one good news we got them out. That was excellent news for the library. Because with that huge foundation in the back, that could have been a real problem.
Well, that, you're seeing, you know, stucco damage at that foundation and we have ongoing water management issues.
The stucco on the, on the exposed concrete in the back is primarily aesthetic. But it's the, it's the, it's the, where it changes from stucco to, to brick. There's, there were some deficiencies in construction there, so that joint between the two dissimilar materials took a beating from freeze-thaw cycles and what have you, and wind-blown rain. It's nothing unusual. It's just a maintenance item that we have to pay attention to. And the other thing, very minute, nobody pays attention, all the weep holes at the bottom of the brick veneer. All of the mud was took residence in there. Plug the holes. They should be cleaned out on a regular basis. What else can I talk about? The retaining wall on the south side, that's a disaster.
That's not one that we got ARPA money for. This is on the parking lot side of the building. And there's a slant down from the parking lot and they put in no drainage. The water has seeped and seeped.
It's falling.
I blame it, I blame it partly on the choice of the block that was used, both in that retaining wall and on the north entry. That north veneer, or that, that north entry, there's a parapet there. That, that, that style of block is not very water-resistant. In fact, it's probably water-absorbing. And it didn't appear. And it didn't appear that any waterproofing was applied to that material once, once it was, once construction was done. And.
I'm sorry, Ralph, go ahead.
I mean, it's a very pretty style block, but I I think it was a poor choice as far as the resisting the elements.
And when we asked for the retaining wall, that retaining wall showed problems. The um, other wall at the parking lot side looked fine back then. But it is basically, one corner of it is basically crumbled in the last year.
Well, I think, I think that retaining wall's been declining ever since it was built.
Probably, but now it's crumbled. Literally crumbled.
So is that retaining wall gonna show up on CIP in future years?
Probably. Unless that, if we do have money in the building repair, building maintenance fund in the next few months, that we don't have anything else for. That will be what it goes towards, is attempting to fix at least part of that. Um, and hopefully. Put in some drainage so that all the water does not go into those blocks. Um, but um, yes, if if we don't have the money to do it, it will probably show up in CIP at some point.
Okay, any more questions for Karen or Ralph?
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thanks, Ralph.
All right, I think we can move on then. Thanks, Karen.
Mike Tomo.
Mike Tomo. Waiting patiently.
Hi there. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
So um, the request that's in front of you from me um. Is probably a little bit shorter than the requests that you've seen from others. And that's because um. For better or for worse, the issue really became m- most apparent um, the date that these requests were due. Um, but but essentially, for at least the last five years, we've had an intermittent water. Issue in the land use department. Um, it has happened very infrequently up until. Uh, this past year, um, when we now seem to get water in the in the department every time it rains. Um, it culminated, culminated in about, in the last two weeks with all the rain that we've had. Um, and and have had some fairly substantial leaks um, and and water make its way into the office. We've had to have the file cabinets moved out and and um, luckily, we have a very um. Uh, resourceful superintendent uh, who's been able to pitch in and lend us a a hand with some of the equipment they have, but. Probably the last storm, uh, you know. I I don't know, I'd probably venture to say we probably removed uh, fifty plus gallons of water um, from the, from the floor. Last year, uh, the the town paid to have the flooring replaced in the office. So it's now new carpet, which is. Basically being uh, ruined every time it rains. Um. And so we we've looked at this to in in the short time that that we've had and. Um, I I did have someone who's sort of familiar with construction and a builder. Quickly take a look to make sure that I I was not um, being outlandish in my request. Um, and the recommendation was to look at um. Sizing the downspout and gutter on that side of the building correctly. So it can handle the water that that the roof line is is discharging in that direction. Um, to deal with the negative slope um, within that small garden area immediately against the building. So basically, when when those gutters currently discharge right onto the ground in front of the uh, our department windows. It just, the the way the ground is sloped now, the water runs right back up against the wall of the building. Um, and then to to actually do a little bit of excavation and try to figure out if there's an issue there and 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 seal or coat that. Um, so I don't have a quote because uh, as I said, we haven't quite had the time. Um, but um, we did review that the 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 damage or the the cleanup necessary. Um, at this point would would some, be something the town could submit an insurance claim for, but I am not. It doesn't make sense to do that if we're gonna just get rain, water in again. Um, so we'd really like to solve the problem before we we try to uh, put the office back together. Um, so this would cover sort of investigating and and coming up with a um, more formalized plan to solve this problem and then. Actually um, kind implementing that that solution so it doesn't continue to happen.
It it looked like you had put it in for um, for this current fiscal year, which it does sound like it's. That important that it needs to have. I don't, so timing wise, I don't know if it if. It even makes sense to wait until this plan would be going to effect.
Yeah, I I I submitted it because the deadline was coming and and in my very quick review of of everything that was there. I couldn't identify where else this would come from without just requesting it from the board of finance. And at the time, had no idea what the cost was gonna be. I didn't know if it was a two thousand dollar repair or a two hundred thousand dollar repair. Um, so I just wanted to get this in. I I agree the timing isn't isn't ideal, but I, because this has been. Such an issue. Um, and we've had issues with in the town hall with with documents. Being damaged because of water before. I I just wanted to make sure I was covering my bases.
Can I ask a really stupid question? Where is this office? Direct, I know it was in this building, but I have no way. Right below this, okay. Like I said, I I know there are offices in this building, but I don't know where they are all located.
Yeah.
Yeah. Part of the problem is that there's two buildings here, the old building and the new building. And the move on that building slopes back towards this building and then drains out that way. Which is right next to uh, Mike's office.
Uh, yeah, I've seen that and I I wondered about that because that seems like a very odd way to connect the two. Um, but okay, thank you. That's all, where in this building it was is what I wanted to know.
Isn't something to wait on?
No, and and it's also potentially bigger than Landus. It probably technically falls under the selectmen.
Yeah.
Tell you, Pete.
Yeah, thank you.
But this whole building.
Yeah, well, Mike and I discussed it briefly for all of four and a half seconds and Mike said, I'm gonna submit it. I said, fine, good, go. Cause I didn't have the wherewithal to do what he was doing. And him, he's the one that was waiting around in his office. Although I gotta admit, it wasn't much higher than his ankles.
Uh, but there's there's a legitimate conversation to be had about how to address. Uh, what's gonna be forthcoming on this building too. You know, I know it's kind of the ugly stepchild that never gets talked about. Um. But that is just one of, I mean, all the things that Mike has dealt with over the past years are just the result of this being this building. Um. You know.
Uh, there there was a a time when the ceiling collapsed on in Donna's, in the finance office on. Tax, on the last day of the fiscal year, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what it was. And almost destroyed the um, the the computer bank. That had all of the, you know, I mean, it really just missed it. And the the ceiling collapsed with water just pouring in. But that's underneath that group, but um. Uh, it's it's tenuous.
Yeah. Um, no, I mean, it's one of those things. Like, it's not the discussion necessarily we proceed. I feel the the plan of how to address this building is a larger. Thing, but in the interim, it would be, see, it'd be to.
It 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 does have something to do with the way the water drains away from this building, as I understand it, talking to. Ralph shaking his head because he's looked at it, I'm sure. Uh, 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 talking to uh, Troy. They they know where the waters drain at different times and it directs one way. For some reason, and then they have to switch it when the rain gets heavier for another reason. And. I don't understand what's going on. I will, I will fully admit my ignorance on that. I just tell Troy that it's time to switch the water and he does it.
Yeah, I I mean, but is there a point where it becomes smart to have, again, an emergency fund for this building? Yeah, I know that's, yes, it does, and I get it, but.
Well, that's where that building assessment comes in, of short and long term.
But that building assessment is now fifteen years too late. Cause we've been talking about this for fifteen years at least, maybe even longer. Um. I don't know.
Does anybody know where the septic system is?
It's up there.
Hey, see, I learned something in this.
I think it's up there. I remember.
So if you had to run like storm drain and trenches in the back, you might be able to do that without disturbing the septic system.
Ralph has his hand raised. He would actually find out.
Ralph, you know where the septic is?
No, I don't know where the septic is. It's in the ground somewhere out back.
Thanks, thanks, thank, that was, that was very helpful.
Hopefully, hopefully.
As as far as this water issue, this is, this is an old issue. This is not new to Mike's tenure by any stretch. And and quite frankly, uh, Mr. Tanok, I think this belongs in a board of selectmen's budget, but that's another story. Um, yes, it's the, the way the metal building was put up against this building so we could park some buses in there and work on them. And then it was converted into office space and made pretty. Um, there's probably a very simple way to resolve this. It may not be aesthetically pleasing to Mr. Marshall. Um, but I think it could be a, not an outrageous fix, but at least something to direct the water in a better direction. Uh, both for the site and the building. Um.
Lipstick on a face. I'm not gonna get offended.
No, I I I just thought that I love to pick on architects, so forgive me. Um, having dealt with them for a long time. Um. But there could be a way to just put a false roof on from the ridge of the metal building over to the wall of the, on us, on the east side of the uh, upper meeting room. That would solve it. Anyway. I'll shut up. No, I I shouldn't be speaking anyway.
So so the the question now is. What do we put in for year one of next year? But also, it sounds like there, you don't know what exactly yet. But it's gonna be sooner than later. We're gonna need some money to do something. So if you need the CIP committee to support that, then we we could maybe make a motion that.
I just don't even know. I I don't even have an order of magnitude. That's my problem.
Right.
I I I don't know what the options are. I don't know what the order of magnitude is. I have nothing for you, so it it's hard, it's hard to. Beg from a position of total ignorance.
Um, this.
I was gonna say, I I um, I was lucky enough, or I thought I was gonna be lucky enough. Mm, last night because we had a planning and zoning commission meeting until mother nature changed our minds for us, but um. Michael Johansson sits on the planning and zoning commission and and is sort of in this space. And so I asked him. And he actually looked at the building because I wanted to make sure that this request, that the amount would cover the solution. And so the 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 sort of rough scope that I that I outlined. Was his recommendation as far as the the negative slope, which is what causes the water to run towards the building instead of away. The downspouts are too small and can't actually capture and and discharge the water and they're, and then the issue of the foundation itself. He feels that to solve that very small piece of the whole building issue, it would be less. He he feels unless the scope were to grow substantially less than twelve thousand. Um, but but he's, you know, he looked at everything and obviously there's, there, you know, it's one of those things where you. You fix one problem and you know, there's, there's ten more that you run into, but I think for this small portion. Um, the the twelve thousand would be more than than what would be needed.
Okay, can I ask exactly what the the suggestion is? To implement a solution with this twelve thousand, what?
Yep, so it would be to resize the gutter that is on that side so that it will, it'll capture and and. Be be adequate for the amount of stormwater that's that's coming off the building. There, there are two gutters that discharge right in that corner. In the little area that the garden club maintains. And so um, we we try to move that water. Oh, tor- towards the other side of the building. It just, the slope brings it back to, up against the town hall. Um, and then um, changing the pitch of that garden area so that it moves the water away from the building. Right now, as I said, it just comes right back. And then um, actually coating the foundation. In that area to seal up the, what's actually accepting the water. Um, I'm not sure what changed, but but we have gotten more water in the last month than we've gotten in the last five years. Um, so so something has changed substantially.
Just in general, gotten more water, yeah.
Uh, yeah, we we, Demis has has been uh, alerting us to to just volumes of rain in these last. Three storms, I believe it was. Uh, you know, three and a half inches plus and less than twenty-four hours twice. And then. Another two and a half inches on top of four inches of snow which backed everything up as well, so.
But do you really think that just adjusting the gutters and sloping the land properly is gonna be enough?
So the the issue that has sort of prevented this solution from being addressed more quickly is that. You have this this little tiny garden island up against the building and then you have the entire parking lot. And so to move the water. Away from it with any type of pipe or infrastructure, you'd be trenching the entire distance of the parking lot. Which is a pretty significant undertaking. You'd have to know what's under there. Um, and so uh. That, if if, that would move the water away from the building, but if there's a crack or there's some issue. In the foundation itself or in somewhere else causing that water to get in, if we have, if it's a groundwater problem as well, we're still gonna have water. Um, but we had talked about that. I talked about trying to deal with the gutters. And trying to get the water around the side of the building so it can go towards sort of the 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 finance department side. Um, where the cages are. Yeah, I'm gonna make it Donna's problem, but. Uh, geography is in their favor, so once it gets there, they won't have to deal with it. It certainly won't ask to sit at their desk with them.
They they have the PVC pipe that runs, that that is like a homemade. MacGyver thing from ten years ago, from a different problem. That's what that is.
I mean, regardless of what this becomes, it sounds like it's it's something that needs to be addressed in the current year funds rather than.
Yeah.
And then there's potentially a continuation of this where we.
I think we need to put in.
We're over the next two months if you find it's worse.
Mike, Mike, you put in for twelve twelve thousand? I'm sorry, Jay. You put in for twelve thousand on this?
Yes, I did.
I I don't think it matters when you put twelve thousand in under, under uh, building department or under the selectmen's budget or where you put it. But it's some department within this building and then we take care of it. And uh, I I, we can talk to whoever we need to start talking to. I I I, this is, this is not a major road project or anything. It's not drainage on Village Hill. Like we've all been hearing about for twenty years.
Um, Mike, Mike, can I ask you, uh, I know you have um, ARPA funds to do the documentation. Um, software project that you are working on with the town clerk. Um, is there other things like that? Or is there a continuation of that that you think in the next five years that? Land use is gonna need significant funds to do?
Um, so we have um, basically. All of that has been completed, the scanning. Um, they scanned ninety-six file boxes worth of of documents. So like six hundred, seven hundred thousand pages. Um, the only thing that we didn't, we weren't able to cover with the funds was some of the. Basically the flat files that are in sort of the, that break room area across from the office downstairs. Um, but they will only do off-site scanning, meaning come to the office, pick up documents and scan them. Um, in, their minimum project cost is ten thousand. Um, so that's the only thing that we weren't able to do. But the plan, it'll be probably two years before we can do it or finish it, but. The plan is to tack on two operating budget items. Um, two five thousand dollar line items, you know, end of the fiscal year, beginning of the next to get to the ten thousand so we can get that part done. Um, so I don't, the only other thing which we haven't had the chance to discuss with the. Planning and zoning commission because the EDC is sort of kicking off the strategic plan and that. Really will dovetail with the new P O C D, which you guys talked about earlier. So that's a twenty twenty-six project. Um, I don't know what the commission's thoughts will be. I know the town has traditionally hired consultants. Um, I don't know what the commission's thoughts will be, I know the town is traditionally hired consultants. Um, but it's something that we can do in-house, um, so I don't anticipate there being the significant. You know, fifty, eighty, hundred thousand dollar request to hire somebody else to come in and do that, if the commission is happy to do it. Piece by piece in-house, then, then that's what we'll do.
Okay, alright, great. I just wanna make sure we're not forget, you know, leaving you guys out.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Alright, any more questions for Mike? Alright, well, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Moving on then, uh, future meeting planning, alright, so you guys saw my email where I am attempting to hurt cats. And I got, I got somewhere, um, the first, the first bit of news is that I think we're gonna cancel next week's meeting. Because number one, I can't be here.
Okay.
Um, and number two, uh, we had us, we had hoped that the Board of Ed could come and they can't. Um, and it didn't seem like anyone else who was sort of. Just sort of on the outliers would be able to come either, so, um, so if we skip next week and then we come the next week, which is the thirty-first. Um, that's when the fourth, is that when I said the Board of Ed?
No, I think you said they were, he requested the fourteenth.
The fourteenth, right, and you're not here that.
Aside from that, I wonder.
One other person.
That's gonna be too late to really delve in, um, you know.
Yeah.
It gets too close to the twenty-nine.
Fourteenth is the last one on the, the calendar?
The, uh, no, it goes all the way to the end of the month, basically. Um.
It may have something to do with the timing of Q A and M. You know, study that they're doing, but.
Well, they, so, so just, so yesterday was the deadline to submit things, and so today is when I downloaded everything. And um, I was trying to, to group it, I, I didn't, I, I only got today's things grouped, so I, I'll send it out to you guys, but um. Basically, you can see that the whole array, which years they wanna do with what and how much it costs. Um, for each school and it's, it's, it's a good way to look at it, but, yeah, it's a sixteen million dollars over the next five years. And it's like sixty projects or something, it's, it's a lot.
I heard seventy-something project.
Uh, yeah, there's some that are combined together, but.
Only because Brendan was telling me how long it's taken her to enter it all.
Yeah, it must have taken her a very long time.
She would not have to.
No, but she won't have to put them in ever again.
Okay.
But, no, really, cause it's, it's in there now, now, we used to make people resubmit every year and that's a whole big pain, so. So, yeah.
It, it just seems like that's gonna be the hot.
Yeah.
Thing to discuss and, I, you know, I don't know how this timing, I'm not, my fridge here.
Yeah.
So I don't know how, you know, how involved that gets or whether or not there's advantage to at least. Wrapping our minds around that initially earlier.
Yeah, which, um, we can look at it, uh, if I send you the, the list of things, um. In the back, raw materials, you can all look at it and think about it. Um, think it all might, might make sense, um.
Does P O E need another week or two to get prepared for as well?
No, um, they, well, they submitted it and they've, they've been talking about it amongst themselves, so I think they're.
They're ready to go?
I think so.
So we're not meeting on the twenty-four? That's next, yeah, not, not. That's good, cause that's a library board meeting, I wasn't gonna be able to make it anyway.
Right, right.
And then on the seventh?
Yep.
And the fourteenth?
Yep.
And they can't make the fourteenth, cause that's a library board meeting.
Yeah.
Um, is there anything after that?
The twenty-first.
Twenty-first, okay.
Yes, and I forget, um, I think, maybe it's Troy, I think Troy can come on the, um.
The problem is that every other Wednesday is library board.
I, I mean, I'd love to get Board of Ed in here sooner.
Yeah, maybe we'll get, maybe we'll break them into two. Maybe we'll have him come on the thirty-first for, for just an overall, like, big picture. And then the fourteenth for, for like in-depth about the very specific things.
I mean, ultimately, the, the scope of the Board of Ed work involves a, a budget and what they perceive. Primarily what they perceive as priorities.
Yeah.
Whether it's one million dollar to five million dollars. Just to list them in order and see how far the money goes, I think it's similar to what they did this year with the.
Well, I can tell you right now that year one was four million dollars. And.
Well, yeah, part, part of this request and part of this reality.
Yeah.
Every department can probably go up with four million dollars and stuff off of that.
Well, that's, I, but again, this is the stuff that's definitely hard on, that that four million is, it's roof replacement, is H E A C.
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm not saying it's not needed, but there's a certain crowd in town of voters that would say, you know, let's substantially cut that. And ultimately, this budget needs to be approved by the voters, so if you include it, four million or ten million or one million, it's still having to get passed. So if you'd like to put twenty million at the schools, if we know that, uh, it's not likely to happen.
Now, there's, there's grant reimbursement, you lose sixty percent of that investment, you know, if you don't move on it quickly for a lot of these projects, for. Well, not for a lot of these projects, for the two projects. But those are gonna be some of the big ticket items.
The thing is, you're both absolutely right. You're absolutely right, we lose a grant if we don't pass it, i- if we don't put it forward and. If we put the whole thing forward, then, then we could move the whole freaking thing, so. Then it fails and you're back to square one, so you gotta figure out where that happy medium is.
Yep. Yeah. Well, um, and then the, then the fire departments is the other one.
Ooh, fire departments are gonna come and ask you for big money.
Yeah. Bigger than the schools.
They're gonna ask you for big.
So, let's see.
See, compared to that, the library's not asking for anything.
Really, really? It's not much.
Except for the three million dollar building you have.
That's done in what, a couple of years?
Three years.
Three years, that's what I thought.
So that, they want their three million dollar building next?
Eleven.
Eleven, yeah, well, that's two buildings, it's only five and a half each.
Yeah, well, uh, so, I, I wish I, I could remember what. Uh, what I was mapping out for the next people, but we, we have people coming to all the different.
Good.
To our different parties here, so.
Tomorrow night, I got three meetings at the same time, so I'm gonna have headphones on while I'm in another meeting.
Well, thank you for doing library on a day I could be here.
Yes, no, that's why I did it, that's why I did it.
Yeah, usually we just have the second Wednesday of the month, but it's budget season, so we have the second and the fourth. Because there's a lot of stuff going on with our budget over there.
I bet, yeah, it's, it's, it's just, it's a lot, everybody's shuffling around, but it all works out in the end.
Or it doesn't, we just deal with it, right?
Yep. Um, alright, what's the next thing? Oh, I know what it is, it's a germ.
Move to a germ.
I'll second.
All in favor?
You know I'm good for that.
Yep.
Oh, God, last week's library board.